It looks like it's 7:45. So, we are ready to open the public hearing under RGFA for three Kings Grant. Who's here to present for Kings Grant?
You, Jay?
Yep.
The on-site?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Catalano and...
Mike Peterson.
Mike Peterson, I would do the...
Owner, yeah.
Okay. We've given this about 20 minutes, 25 minutes for discussion. So, Jay, it's the usual rules. If you could try to hold your presentation to 20 minutes or so, then that would give us a chance for questions and comments from the consultants and the board, and then we can open it up for a public comment.
All right. So, just going to go quickly through the beginning of this, of the pack, the plan package. So, we have, the public hearing put together the answer to the oldest claim, which is basically just an RGFA study of the area. So, within 300 feet of the property, we have 13 of butters, 10 of them residential butters. The average RGFA of these butters within 300 feet is approximately 3,500 square feet. It's a big variance between the RGFA. Actually, the lowest 1,300, or so, but 3,000 square feet goes over at the seventh album. But when we take this down, the study down, to actually what's, what the actual RGFA of the houses within the subdivision for the Kings Grant area, that average bumps up to 4,750 with a difference between 2,400 and 7,000. So, that's more in the ballpark of where we are with our proposal, which we're proposing at just over 5,400. Basically, we have existing house, front low garage. The house itself has no drainage system as of right now, so it's all controlled runoff from the house and the driveways. Septic system was installed about 2,000. Bill Murphy had done the design, did some soil testing. He found sand material on the site. Ground already estimated at 11,000 feet. The lot itself is just over 30,000 square feet, which makes it conform because it's a residency. We have frontage of about 200, just over 210, so a little bit over the 175 mil. We have two directed butters, basically 319 North Ave., which is about 127 feet from the existing house, and just under 90 feet to 11 Kings Grant. What we're proposing is take down the existing house and basically build a new dwelling, basically try to utilize the existing footprint as well, as much as we can for the new location. This is a revised plan, the plan that you show on the sidewalk actually had the double opening for the driveway coming across. So, since then, we redesigned this, just have a little thumb turn around area for a couple, two cars to park in. We moved this portion of the driveway, keeping that portion of fence that we were going to remove and save two additional trees. So, altogether for the project, we're only taking down four trees, which are adjacent to the house. These four, three of them are inside the house. We have aluminum work that runs along this edge, which is basically saving all the vegetation along the side. We're saving the vegetation that we have in the back over here, and then across, we run it along the actual riverfront section over here. So, we're going to save the tree, all the actual vegetation within that side. We're proposing driveway, basically 32 feet wide in this section here, a little thumb kicker, turn around on the side. This projects no further than the existing walkway already that's there, so no one will notice any difference there. We do have a proposed recharge basin that handles the 100-year stone movement for this increase in the previous area to the house and the driveway footprint. We're showing decreases in runoff to all the butters, which is Kings Grant, and then two directed butters in the ballpark of about 30% from peak and bottom. So then, and then for the plantings, which is part of the mitigation, what we're proposing is we're proposing predominantly just all ground cover here because of the site distance. You know, we just want to clean this area up and then put some additional ground cover in and make that look a little bit better. All along this area here, we're proposing to take down the hedge and put all brand-new rote dentions in. That's going to, and basically grow it through that section there. We're looking at doing basically a Cusadog wood on the side over here, which is going to be about 10 feet tall. And then when they do rotemaxes all through this side here to enhance this whole area, because if you remember, that's all deciduous trees through that section. On the backside, we just have a little saw wood, we have saw wood in this section here. We have some green giants proposed there. I'm sorry, these are the green giants through here, and these are... These are the... I'm sorry, they're both, they're actually, they're all six of them. I actually got that wrong. That's the hollies. So, these are the three hollies, which are all going to be seven to eight feet tall. And then these are green giants, which are going to be eight to 10 feet tall. This is the section where, if you remember, where the actual fence broke, where it went to a chicken wire fence, which we're proposing to basically just take that stockade fence and continue it around. So, that's going to enhance some of the privacy through that backyard as well. The lighting is very minimal. We're basically just on 11,000 lumens. We have basically one light at each door. We have three along the backside of the, for the garage face. We have a couple of landscape lights on the backside, and then two along the walkway. We have one stair light there, two stair lights there, and then we have the pole light.
Could you repeat where you were, up in the corner of North Ave. in Kings Grant? You said cut down and have ground cover?
Oh, yeah. So, what they have is just some wild grass there right now, so we're just proposing to do some additional ground covers in there. So, just, that has a better appearance as opposed to the wild grass. We don't want to, because of the fact that this is a site distance corner, we don't want to, we didn't want to do anything that's going to be growing too tall, so everything's going to be all over.
You're going to leave the fence?
This existing fence. Well, we have a note on it to leave it, and then if it falls down, to repair it, to have the ability to repair it. Yep, and then that's, we can't push this fence out at all. There's actually two stakes right there because of that site distance.
But just sort of outline where the fence turf is.
Sure. Yep, so it runs right along the property line, and it's a couple of feet behind the stone wall along North Ave. Then it comes across this section here where there's actually two stakes, stakes right there for the site distance, and then runs to the section right there.
Okay. Take a look at the architecture?
Well, as you heard, the house is 5436 RGFA. We've decided to bring the eaves down to the first floor level on the North Avenue side to try to minimize the mass from North Avenue. This is the view you see down Kings Grant. The garage, as you can see, is around the side, so we minimize the impact of the garage as the driveway comes around, just the minimal turn around to get it out of the garage. And then there's a main mass in the middle, and then lower wings on the other side. The materials, proposed materials are board and batten, painted board and batten for the first story. There are some examples of that. And then red cedar shingles for the upper stories, asphalt composite roof, copper gutter, you know, pretty conventional materials. This is the view of the Kings Grant view.
Quick question, what's the next one, ridge height over three sections?
The ridge height is 29 foot 8 inches, which has, you know, is well under...
3120 is the natural grade.
So, that's the first floor grade. First floor, I'm, you know, just, this shows the earlier plan when we got rid of the second drive. Now, we're just going to have one end cut and a little parking area there, and then a small hammerhead to get in and out of the garage. One of the constraints we had in location of the building is the existing septic system. That really precluded any opportunity to push it forward to the back of Kings Grant or, and then this side, we're hemmed in on setbacks. But this shows you the constraint we were dealing with with the existing septic system. This is the south view of the house, and again, the north view. And the view...
Definitely on the outside.
This is the backside, and this is the side facing North Avenue. So, you can see, we brought the mass down to one story there. Most of the composition, you see there's roof. And again, board and batten on the main block of the building, shingles above, and then asphalt composition roof. Is the increase in the previous area?
I don't have the exact number, but we are reducing the runoff to the, as that's what every judge is.
So, there's not a lot of manipulation on the spot, you know, taking and fill out?
It's a woods of minor cuts. What happens is that there's a sway that goes around. With you, if you're taking account the cut for recharge basins and stuff like that, it's about, it's 300 yards. But it's, you can see what happens is to get greater, right now, this is almost all flat. So, to get basically 2% around the house, that's kind of that, that's what that's about cutting is to get around the house.
Okay, good. Comments from consultants? Dave looks pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, pretty cut and dry.
Okay. Kim, any comments at all?
No, I mean, it's in keeping with the neighborhood. They've left the holes in the back. I think the front looks, you know, better because you're taking down the armpit ready hedge and putting in something a little bit more natural.
Okay. Questions, other questions from this board?
I've got a couple. It's going to change the viewscape on North Avenue. I mean, because the existing house is single-story, and now, you know, if you're heading, sort of heading east on North Avenue, this is going to be, this is going to be a lot more of a presence at that corner.
Yeah.
So, just, again, so go through the, what is the landscape planting behind the fence on that corner?
So, this, so just so you know, this is looking back at that corner. This is the existing trees that are all staying along the fence line. So, that's why it's almost, as long as we keep that area maintained, it's going to be very hard to see. We do have a profile coming through there near it, because this is only one-story building. This is what you're going to see from North Ave.
Going to be twice as high.
So, what we have is, we haven't proposed any enhancement on that side. It's everything, all our enhancements are all along this section here, and then through this, and then filling in the opening between us and the neighborhood on that side. We're proposing to keep all the vegetation, all these deciduous trees on that side.
And with that thought in mind, it's one of the reasons that this section here is really a one-story section. And then the real two-story mass doesn't start until you're halfway up this slope on the roof here. Because the eve, this eve all the way around is a one-story eve, and this is a one-story cable in there. So, the major two-story mass isn't really until you're in the middle of all that right there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just noting it, it's not going to be, it'll be different, but that's, I mean, it's going to be worse. It's just going to be different. And I take your point that you're going to keep the screen from the major, from the larger part of the house, or at least replant there. How tall are the new plantings along Kings Grant now?
So, these are all going to be basically three to four feet when they go in.
Three to four feet?
Yep, three to four feet when they go in. The hedge there right now is, it's about five feet through that section there. This here is all, these are all going to be, same thing, these are all, these are all starting to go in at three to four feet.
This house overlooks the Dairy Joy.
Yes.
Okay. Wouldn't it make sense for the owner, or, I don't know if it's a spec house, or if it's going to be a sale, or what its plans are?
The owner's sitting right there.
Are you going to live there?
Yeah.
Okay. Wouldn't it like a little blockage between you and the Dairy Joy, more than three feet?
Yeah, so I live there, I live in liquid now. I live up on Bay State. So, I'm very familiar with Dairy Joy, almost too familiar. So, yeah, it does, it will need potentially more blockage from more plantings.
I mean, three feet is just what I understand.
Oh, I know, I know.
You're getting a great side view of the dumpsters.
Yeah. Yeah, there's actually, there's...
It's a planted boulevard there.
There's a nice median, believe it or not, there's a nice median that we pay to maintain. And it's not horrendous. And then Dairy Joy actually has a strip also blocking them, so it's not as bad as you'd think.
As I imagine?
Yeah, I mean, if you're at Dairy Joy in the summer and all the cars are over there, it's not as bad as if you were in the property looking that way. Because really, it's one, two, three lines of potential blockage of lights and noise.
You're saying three feet's okay, Kim, because?
I think it's going to grow quickly, and again, because you've got, you know, that street is unique because you've got that median strip down the middle. It didn't seem oppressive to me at all.
I mean, they could, they could put in more after they move in.
Yeah.
You know? It would be nice to look at from the Dairy Joy.
Yeah. Real close to Dairy Joy.
Same from the Dairy Joy anyway, however tall the plants are. It's really just from the street level.
And they are fitted between those, really, that's, we have that 28-inch deciduous that's there, those are a couple of hundred, so those are all, they're all in the, over two feet wide. So, yeah, those couple in, and then you throw these in. Eventually, they're going to, they're going to be as tall, taller and taller than the hedge that's there.
Well, can we maybe put in a condition that we could add a couple of larger plants?
Don't we always allow additions?
Well, no, not always.
What about encourage?
Well, just how the conditions, the future screening planting is allowed along whatever, was that North Side?
Well, I'm just thinking, when we sign off on the project and we see, and we actually see the impacts out there of the site, we might want to specify, we might want to require a couple of more plants just to break up the mass. So, if we could throw that into conditions, then that would give us the flexibility of requiring them or not, depending on what we see out there.
You know, I'll post that, right?
No, I'm not posting.
I mean, the ability to redesign specifically for that?
Well, we're going to check off the build conditions anyway. We always do. You know, Kim and Dave will out, take a look and see what it looks like, and if it looks like a couple of more screen plants there would break up the mass, might as well have the ability to make that happen. The other question I've got is, the width of the driveway at the garage is 32 feet. Do you need all of that asphalt?
Like, we've gone at this, uh...
General, this, this, this... If we'd like to keep the garage door jams intact, we probably do need that distance because it's a very tight turn to get in and out.
Well, at the garage doors, I can see it, you're going to be pulling in and going into the garage and backing out, I guess into the hammerhead, and then pulling out the front way. But between the...
Here, is this what you're worried about right here? I think we could, if we needed to, we could actually...
Yeah, that's my...
Cut this, cut this width down a little bit, as long as we maintain our turning radius in the first bay.
Yeah, all you need is the turning radius, but it's 32 feet almost all the way out of this tree.
Yes.
We could actually cut, we could pull this out a little bit more.
Right.
Like this.
Exactly.
Which would give us a chance to put in another plant there.
Or another tree.
Yeah.
Right.
So, we, I mean, I think this probably needs to be 16 to 18 feet is the minimum, I would think is a safe distance to make, to make that turn.
And we actually, for the sidewalk, I actually had that. We had, I actually added this in because the, you talked about, when, when, one of the comments had come up that this was a weird turn to make on the driveway, so I actually cut down that radius a little bit to get rid of that. I can, I can put it back. I take it, I just got to figure that out.
I'm not sure that's exactly what we meant. I think that was whether it was a, it was a circular driveway. And you're saying like 16 to 18, so that...
I need to check them now.
Are they mentioned?
No, no, it's just, it's just making this turn in with a large vehicle into the first bay, that's, that's the issue. Second bay's no problem. Because we won't have a, the other, as you mentioned, the fire chief asking about driveway lists, we have to also think about where we're going to put snow here, and that we may end up pinching that driveway down because we don't want to be killing these plants with a pile of snow in them, so we should be cognizant of that as well.
Yeah. All right, well, if we could modify that corner, put a plant there, that would, I think that would help.
So, we could, we could keep this plant and then put an additional plant there.
Right, exactly. Okay, good. Anybody else?
I think public council.
Well, that's next. All the comments from the board, any, anyone in the audience here to say anything at all? Good, in that case, I think we can, how do you want to do it, Susan? Continue it and, and for a certain date to review the decision, or?
Well, this is going to be an issue.
Yeah.
It's something that you're going to need to have in the next, in subsequent years. You know, you're going to want to continue it out to a reasonable time to get this written.
Right. I think everybody should bear in mind that we're sort of in a bit of a pickle here because our planner left to go to another town. Susan is being gracious enough to fill in while we look for another planner, but she's not going to, you're not going to be here in April, any of April at all, or?
Perhaps one date, and then maybe one or two days, that's it.
Right. Then that would be close to the end of the month, or?
Yeah, the end of the month, but I won't be around basically to do this. So, you know, we have to think, I guess what I'm suggesting, and it may be, you know, humorous for the applicant, that I didn't want to push these off as much as you recently...
I mean, I, I hope you appreciate that we're in a kind of a tough spot.
Can we help with the decision at all, or?
No, we, we write them, but we need to continue to a date when we could be sure that we're going to have the decision written. It's not that we, we're holding it up because I don't see any objections here at all to what, to what's being presented with a couple of minor modifications. It's just, you know, having somebody in-house who is able to write that, to write the decision.
But even, I mean, even if you're, you're starting to do interviews, maybe this week, a week goes by, even at fast pace, and you have somebody on board, and you've got somebody new that doesn't know anything about this.
It's a three-step process, David. I mean, we have to go through three rounds.
Yeah.
So, it's going to take us a month to get to plow through the interview process. You know, we're not going to be done, if we're lucky, until a lot of our party...
And then you're going to have somebody that hasn't...
Is not up to speed, is not anywhere, he hasn't been...
...to write it. So, we need a better solution to get this written. I'm not sure why.
I mean, you know, these are, this is a very easy project to write up. I just won't be around. If you can push this off for this one until mid-May, then I will be back to do it. Can I get it in before then?
I'm just trying to think. Is there some way, since we're, since the, since there aren't any issues that would prevent this guy from getting a building permit?
How do you get a permit to do a retroactive?
Yeah.
It's like, no, it's not.
We've never done that before.
It's not, but I think for, I think if you write this building inspector...
I think that's a real slippery slope.
Okay, all right, well...
But let me make another suggestion. Since this is easy, and since I won't be here all April 2, I suggest maybe this writing, the first draft, would be done by a planning board member, and then, no, but I admit, it'll be really rough. I mean, if I were doing it, let me tell you, it'd be ridiculous. It would be like a hand-built clay pot. But then Susan could maybe revise off of that and might speed the process up.
Who are you suggesting doing that?
Well, you know, there's really, when you think about it for something like this, there's a template that we've done over the years. It's, it's really very formatted. It's just that I won't be around to do it, and that's the issue. So, even, I mean, again, I hate to do it to this gentleman, but if you can push it off till mid-May, I could get something out. But if they, if you're not comfortable with that, you can find a new suggestion.
Well, obviously, you want to get started.
Yeah, I've got people lined up. People are going to, you're talking about people making a living doing, I mean, it's not your problem, but you're impacting many families and many things that have been lined up.
Well, we sort of got left to have a lurch.
Yeah, no, I understand, that's fine, though.
Yeah, we're only, we're doing the best we can with a situation that we didn't make.
That's why I was asking, could the owner's council help the planning staff get the decision together?
That's an even slippery slope.
I wrote down, John Field for...
Yeah. I'd rather write the letter, but Sue's not comfortable with that, so Sue, you get to write the decision.
Okay.
All right?
But I'll write the decision as best I can, but we know that I am a terrible note-taker.
Email it to Susan.
And, yeah, but I won't come here to get the decision, right?
But are you going to be reading emails?
No.
No.
She's going to be on vacation, so...
Oh, wow.
But on vacation, but you would at least be able to, at the end, come back, shake your head, and put your, you know, round your forehead on the desk and say, oh, God, and start over. Because hopefully, someone will be in there. We'll start over on editing my decision.
No, we have to vote on it, Susan.
I would like, I think it makes more sense if we can get town council to write it. We can look at the tape, we can hear what comments they were.
Well, the other, it also raises the other question. We might as well talk about it. How, we're not going to be able to have a meeting to vote on it.
You can vote.
Yeah. We don't, we don't have anybody to organize the meeting. We don't have a planner in place, so we will have, our, our next meeting would have to be in May.
Well, you've got public hearings set up in April, so...
Well, how do we, we've got to organize that.
I can set up the agenda before I go. I mean, that's easy. They've already been set up, they've already been advertised for April.
That's fine.
But you have to...
How many meetings do we have set up in April?
It's your usual schedule. So, you have a meeting April 1st, you have a meeting April 15th, and a meeting April 29th.
Friday, Friday 29th.
Every other week.
It's every other week.
Well, let me ask you this. Susan, you're going to be here next Monday.
Uh, yes.
If Sue's, if Sue can put probably together the decision on this by next Monday, you could even...
I understand, I've never done this before, so I'm...
Yeah, you said that. Then you can, you can send it to Susan. You'll be here Monday.
Yes, but here's the thing, if, you know, there's a finite number of hours that I'm putting in. If I do that, that means other things don't get done, so I leave it to you all to direct. I mean, if you would like me to sit down Monday and draft this decision...
No, 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 just, just review what Sue puts together.
Frankly, I think it may be... I think it may be, how to say this, you know?
I'm not so...
It may be more expedient if I do it, but I won't be doing anything else. You know, we have the sidewalk, we don't have any meetings coming in, so that's good. You know, phone calls, whatever, so if the other great public out there needs to talk to the planner. You need to direct my time, is what I'm saying. If that's what you want me to do, I'm happy to.
I'm in favor of providing it on Monday.
And her having to edit mine, I'm going to say, for Monday. But may I also bring up the fact that there are other decisions, you know? So, suddenly, who actually gets the work done as opposed to everybody else? It's, I mean, it's just like a real rat's nest. It's unbelievable.
We got left in a lurch, what can I say?
We certainly did.
But you got to plow white out of it.
All right, so I will do this Monday, and let's, let's think then, can we continue this till, here, can we continue this till the 15th? I won't be at that meeting, but you'll have to vote on it. I won't be at that meeting, but you will have to vote on it.
We, yes, but what's, Sue's just talking about is, I mean, we have this other one coming down the pipe as well. That would have to get put off because we can't, we can't handle that one.
Which one is tonight, lots two and three?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you've got public hearings after public hearing and a public hearing. And the problem is, you have to hold them within, you know, a certain period of time. So that's why they're scheduled.
Well, we could open it and continue it.
Absolutely.
And that may be what we have to do because again, the person who would have to write the decisions won't be sitting in the chair. So how could you, how could that person be counted on to write the decisions? That's why I'm saying, we can, we can sit here and hold these meetings, but unless there's somebody to close the loop, we're, we're going to be up the creek.
Can I suggest, continue this till the fifteenth? They'll have their decision. You can, you know, if you vote on it. Again, I will be there here that Monday.
Yeah, we can vote on that one. That's the other one's...
Well, let's, let's finish this up is what I'm suggesting, and then you're a talker about how we want to proceed from the court office.
If you're really going to write this, this Monday, you should just...
If I get somehow hung up, how could that be?
All right, so we're talking April fifteenth. All right, so we'll have a decision for you. You're the last people that, that I think we're going to be able to deal with for one. So we'll, we'll, we'll get the decision for you by April fifteenth.
Yeah.
We'll schedule that. What we're going to be doing is, is reading and voting on the draft decision on the fifteenth, so there's no testimony, no presentation. You don't have to come if you don't want to. There won't be anything in it that we have to talk about in the next year. All right, so we'll continue it to April fifteenth. Thank you.
Jake?
Thanks for the advice, so I wanted to change that driveway. Yes, and those other changes.